Village of Hinsdale Board of Trustees Meeting for Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please stand and say the pleasure of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item up is approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March five, two thousand and twenty-four.
We've approved the minutes of the regular Board of Trustees Meeting of March five, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. Any changes? Hearing none, vote call vote.
Mr. Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
In nothing for President's Report today, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day is observed with the planting and celebration of trees. And whereas trees in our, in our village clean and improve air quality, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas the village places a high priority on tree preservation, dedicating financial resources and qualified personnel to tree preservation activities. And whereas the Village of Hinsdale, Hinsdale has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, for the thirty-first year in a row by the National Arbor Day Foundation in recognition of the village's commitment to tree preservation. Now therefore, I, Tom Colley, Village President of the Village of Hinsdale, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four as Arbor Day in the Village of Hinsdale and urge all residents to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our village's tree preservation program. Next item is citizens petition. Any person who wants to comment on any item on or off the agenda. For some, it probably makes sense to wait until the item's up before us, but if anybody wants to talk now, this is an opportunity. There's also another opportunity for citizens petition at the end of the meeting. Any takers? Okay. I did this twice last month and then somebody stood up after the meeting wishing to talk, so I want to make sure I give everybody an opportunity. First read, I think that goes to you, Neil.
Yep. Okay, item seven A is for a construction contract for the two thousand and twenty-four resurfacing program. We will be re-asphalting the roads and parking lots shown on the, uh, on the RBT. We'll be, um, the winning bid for the program was submitted by Shorter Asphalt, who did the two thousand and twenty-three surfacing as well. Uh, staff was pleased with their work and a good example of it was the resurfacing of South Lincoln Street from, I think, Fourth to Eighth Street. Uh, and Shorter's bid was thirty-three thousand below budget. Any questions on that, is consent agenda?
They did our work last year, too.
They did our work last year and we were pleased with that.
Yep.
Yep.
Consent agenda.
Okay. And then item seven B is to approve Kathleen, Carrie, and George's authorized contacts with the State of Illinois with the authority to enter in various contracts and agreements on behalf of the Village of Hinsdale. This authorization is especially important as it will enable the village to participate in the rock-salt joint purchasing program. Also, as noted in the RBA, we'll be, uh, seeking to buy, uh, less salt next year due to the light wear. Any questions on that?
Yeah. So, cause we have so much left over, not that we're anticipating another light winter, but we have so much left over.
We have left, we have left over and it says, yeah, I think it says on the, um, uh, on the RBA that, uh, we're gonna buy six hundred tons, but we're only, uh, we, we only have to commit to buying eighty percent of that.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
That's where we're at.
Okay, consent agenda. Luke?
Uh, which moves us to Agenda Item Seven C, and this is a major adjustment to a planned development, uh, for the Hinsdale Hospital, which is located at one twenty North Oak Street. Uh, the applicant is requesting approval to allow for new hospital campus signage for the rebranding from Ameda Health to U. Chicago Medicine Advent Health. Um, the request is to replace the existing twenty-four signs totaling five hundred and sixty square feet with twenty-two new signs totaling six hundred and twenty square feet. Um, as trustees know, our code as it pertains to signage is very detailed. I, I consider it to be somewhat complicated. Um, they do have specifics around total square footage, number of signs, height of signs, number of ground signs, types of signs, setbacks, and illumination. Um, the applicant is requesting several waivers to our code, uh, for its specific needs also. Uh, so consistent with how this board handled, uh, the new signs back in two thousand and seventeen, uh, it's my recommendation that we waive the second reading tonight and move this directly to Plan Commission for its consideration. Uh, Plan Commission definitely has, uh, expertise with regard to signage. Staff has discussed this matter with Chairperson Steve Cashman. Uh, he agrees it should be sent to the full Plan Commission for consideration. Uh, once the Plan Commission reviews and makes a recommendation on the signage and a major adjustment to the plan due to development, the application will come back in front of this board for a vote. So with that, I'm not sure, I mean, the, the information we had in the packet was very, very detailed. The trustees have any questions? We have a, um, a member from the signed company here tonight to talk if there are any questions or if you just prefer to remove, you know, move it directly on.
Move, move.
The only thing I would say is I think we've got some signage that's up for U. Chicago at the current cancer center, which at least in driving by looks good. So if you're, if you're driving by the cancer center, take a look at that. So your next trip will be to Plan Commission. Oh, so, so I'm, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to waive the second reading and approve an ordinance for a major adjustment to a planned development to allow for changes to hospital campus signage for U. Chicago Medicine Advent Health located at one twenty North Oak Street.
Second. Aren't we referring Plan Commission?
Yes, I'm sorry. Good, good catch there, Mr. Postuma. Um, yeah, so let me restart that right from the very beginning, just to be clear. We're gonna waive the second reading and refer the request for a major adjustment to a planned development to allow for changes to hospital campus signage for U. Chicago Medicine Advent Health located at one twenty North Oak Street to the Plan Commission for further hearing and review. Thank you.
Second.
Vote call vote.
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
Which moves us to Agenda Item Seven D. Um, this is a major adjustment to the exterior appearance and site plan changes for the building located at Two Salt Creek, which is commonly referred to, at least by this board, as Mouse Motors or the new McLaren dealership. Um, requested changes are primarily the result of more detailed engineering drawings and the construction considerations. These very quickly in summary include changes to a masonry brick wall for your future ground sign and the exterior fencing. Um, installation of a pivot gate in lieu of bollards, which we previously discussed at this board. Modifications to a transformer and a new generator. Uh, an additional entrance door on the north side and a new concrete pad. Changes to building elevations, which are primarily rooftop mechanicals, which were previously, um, which were previously approved at two. They're coming in with eight now, so I suspect that the Plan Commission is gonna wanna make changes there. Uh, there are changes to the exterior materials of the building, uh, and then a revised landscape plan. Um, if you recall, when the applicant went through the process, this board made a commitment to be, to expedite the process to the best of our abilities and be as efficient as possible during the construction. Uh, we do wanna keep this promise. The requested changes are material and in my opinion, and Chairman, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Chairperson Cashman's opinion, fairly broad in nature. Um, I do not believe that these are outlandish requests, but they do, uh, at least in my opinion, require the full review of the, uh, Plan Commission, who are experts in this type of area and do have, or do have, uh, architects on board. In order to not slow the construction process, Rob McGinnis has stated that the village will be able to issue, issue construction permits and stages. So for example, the site and utility permit has already been issued and the applicant is working on that. Uh, we could issue a foundation permit when, when it's ready, so it could start working on the foundation. I have confirmed with, um, with Rob that the, the foundation, is it gonna be any changes? And we, I did mention setbacks in here, that's with regard to fences and others, but when it changes foundation. Uh, we could put this to Plan Commission, it could hear in, uh, in the month of April and could be back to this board as soon as May. So very similar to, um, uh, what we did with the very first item, Agenda C. I'd like to, I recommend that we waive the second reading and move this to Plan Commission, uh, for its review. We do have, um, the applicant is here tonight to give a quick two to three minute summary of what some of the changes are, if the board is interested in that and wants to make any recommendations before going to Plan Commission. And I'll, I'll leave it up to your discretion whether we wanna hear from the applicant.
I just think we send it.
Send it.
Yep. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, hearing that, I am going to make a motion, uh, to waive the second reading and refer the request for a major adjustment to the exterior appearance and site plan review for changes for a development of a luxury auto dealership at Two Salt Creek Lane for Mouse Automotive to the Plan Commission for further hearing and review.
Second.
Vote call vote.
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bing?
Aye.
Uh, which moves us to Agenda Item Seven E. Uh, and this is an ordinance approving a major adjustment to the exterior appearance and site plan for changes to the rooftop mechanical screening unit to the existing one-story building at two twenty-two East Ogden Avenue, which will be occupied by Norman D. Remodeling. Please recall that Norman D. Remodeling is, is moving from its current location across from Whole Foods down to, down to the, down to the subject location. Um, in June of two thousand and twenty-two, this board approved the exterior appearance and site plan. And in May of twenty-three, it's a little more, uh, less than a year later, approved a major adjustment, which among other smaller changes, reduced the size of the rear addition and patio. This will be the second major adjustment and the applicant is now, um, is requesting just simply one thing, which is the mechanicals for the, um, the mechanicals on top of the building. We originally approved one area, which would be thirty-four feet, approximately thirty-four feet by twenty-three feet deep at a height of seven feet and nine inches. The request here is to add two, to keep that size the same on a width basis, but decrease the depth, depth by five feet and add two additional rooftop screening areas, which would be symmetrical on both the right and the left. Those would be approximately thirteen feet wide. So I never do a good job of explaining this. The easiest way to look at this is there's one picture in our app, in our, uh, in our packet here, and if I could direct you, it's to the very big paper, which is got the... And I, I want, and the reason I'm recommending that we look at this is I do not believe that we should refer this to Plan Commission tonight because it's fairly simple. So, is if you look at this picture right here, this rendering, I should say.
Is there any upper on it?
Yeah, it does not.
Okay.
But this one, yep. So you could see that the mechanic, the rooftop mechanical, which is in the middle, which is what was originally approved by this board. They're looking to add one, which would be symmetrical on the right and the left.
Same height.
Same. Actually, it's gonna be, it's gonna be shorter.
Shorter.
Slightly shorter. The reason that they're doing this is simply, um, simply as they were going through the details of the construction, the weight, and they needed that, they needed to have it more dispersed.
Right.
Um, it, it's nothing more simple than that. One of the key things that we cited, and this is, you can see from this photograph, it's, it's set fairly far back on the rooftop. And as what was a key, um, key characteristic when we approved the original was that it's not gonna be visible from Ogden Avenue.
Cause the building's also elevated from Ogden.
It's elevated and it's set far.
I mean, that, that to me is the determining factor. You won't see this from Ogden Avenue. Either the one that was there now or the two additions, or the original one.
Now, you, you may see them from the side or the back of the building, but not as you look directly.
Right, right.
Which is what we envisioned at the beginning.
Right.
So that's, that's the only change is the requesting.
Okay.
Nothing more than.
Okay.
Um, and we have a representative from the applicant here tonight if there are questions from trustees. Hearing none.
Let's go on second read.
Uh, yes, and so unless you hear from staff, it's probably not necessary for you, it's not necessary for you to come back in two weeks. But our process goes through two reads. We just finished the first one tonight. No questions.
So one ask I have of staff with, with respect to these major adjustments, which we have threw up tonight. Um, I, I kinda knew where these are going because I talked to the staff before we got the Friday packet, but there's so much detail in there that, you know, I don't think the trustee should have to read that detail in the first instance. I'd like to see upfront kind of an executive summary that says that, you know, we reviewed this with trustee Siffler and he said it should be referred to the Plan Commission. We reviewed it with Mr. Cashman, who's the chair of the Plan Commission. Cause to my mind, if they say it should go back, I'm reluctant to overrule it, particularly if the chair of the Plan Commission says it goes back. And I think the staff should have a recommendation in there. And then I think there should be like a reason given why it should either go back or not go back. Like for instance, with this Normandy, you know, the, the change is relatively modest and the added, um, um, uh, equipment on the roof will not be visible from Ogden Avenue, so therefore we think it should be approved. And with respect to, um, Mouse Motors, that, you know, they're adding more mechanicals to the roof, which, which, you know, makes it a somewhat different design and we think it should go back. I, I just, the detail, if somebody wants to read it, I think that's fine. But I think to ask the trustees to go through all that detail and then come to their own independent decision is what they want only to hear at the meeting, what Cashman and, and Luke had thought. Let's, I think it can make, streamline the process. We have kind of an executive summary upfront.
Okay.
It can be just like a paragraph. Does that make sense?
It does, makes sense to me.
Okay, so that takes us to, I think I'll handle the next one since I was involved in a drafting of this proposed ordinance. I mean, Michael did it, but I kind of looked at it. So, um, these are, this is a proposed amendment to, to Title fourteen and this relates to the proposed ordinance relating to the Robbins Historic District. And we, we had a discussion item about this, uh, a while ago. And I just wanted to talk through some of the items that we put in this ordinance and the, the, the way we resolve some issues. So, as I mentioned last time, there's a, there's a tension between preserving the historical district, uh, the Robbins Historic District and preserving property rights. I mean, no, no resident should be deprived of the right ultimately to do with their property as they see fit. And as I mentioned, I think there's a lot of people who live in homes that, you know, that's their, that's their primary asset. And when they move out of their home, they wanna make sure they get top dollar for it. And if they are forced to, to, um, you know, either not sell their home for demolition, uh, to be rebuilt with something else, uh, and they, and they're forced to restore it, you know, that can deprive them of money, uh, and, uh, with respect to their property. And I, I don't wanna do that. But, but on the other hand, as, as we talked about last time, we'd like to, you know, kind of balance between an effort to preserve the history of Hinsdale and the Robbins area and the, and the rights of the, uh, of the individual homeowner. And at the end of the day, the homeowner can ultimately do what they wanna do with their property. So this is, the whole process is designed, is more of a way to persuade residents to, to, you know, not demolish their homes unless there's no other alternative. The house is in such disrepair that it can't be restored. Or if they do put on new construction and a foundation after a demolition, it'd be consistent with historic district. So many years ago, uh, we, we added to those code a provision that where the Historic Preservation Commission, the HPC, would review requests for demolition and new construction in the Robbins Historic District. And as I see it, they basically had two goals. One is to encourage homeowners to not demolish their homes and to restore the historic homes. Or two, and two, if they do demolish it, that they replace it with something that's consistent with the historic homes that continue to exist in the Robbins Historic District. So that's what we're trying to accomplish and largely at the request of the HPC and some review that we did ourselves. And we're trying to tweak that process to try to make it better, um, sensitive to the fact that we don't make the process too long. We, and that while we're proposing may add some time to the process, that, you know, I envision it will add two or three months. And in mo, many cases, it will be quicker than the existing process, could be quicker than the existing process. And still, and it would be consistent with not depriving residents with the ultimate ability to do with their house what they want. So there's, I'll go through some of the proposals. One would be to have a design review team, and this would be a, a team composed of three people. Um, a trustee, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, and it, and they'd be appointed by me and at my discretion, or assuming we can find somebody, a third person, maybe a resident who's interested in historic preservation, uh, an architect or somebody who also wants to be part of the team. And the purpose of this would be to review the designs, uh, at, at the very initial stages, before they become finalized. Cause I think one of the problems that was experienced at the HPC is a resident would come with fully finalized designs. The HPC had problems with it and, you know, the resident spent a lot of time developing this design and it's not something they want to, uh, to, to, to change at that point. So it'd be, it would be more of a collaborative, you know, informal process, not on the public record. They'd meet with a design review team and go over the design, go over, you know, the need for, for demolishing the house. And, um, and so that would be the, the purpose of it. Uh, also, we were gonna adding an architectural impact study for particularly significant homes. And this would be more to bring to the, the, the attention of the Historic Preservation Commission and the board and, and the homeowner, the historic significance of the home, which is not always just the architecture, but sometimes it's who lived there, their place in the community and, and, and things like that. So, and I understand from Alexis that this can be done fairly inexpensively, right? So I think you mentioned a hundred dollars or something like that before, something like that. So it's not, it's not a daunting expense for that. And that would only be for architecturally significant homes that would, and a determination of that would be made by the, by the, um, design review team. So that would be at the front end of the process, then it would go to the Historic Preservation Commission. And they would either issue a, a certificate of appropriateness, um, or condition, add conditions for certificate appropriateness so they can deny the application. In the event that they deny the application, you know, heretofore, that would be the end of the process. And now we'd like to modify the process to have them come to the village board and so that it'd be one further step in persuading people to either, one, not demolish the house or two, put up something that is consistent with what, what we envision is appropriate for the, for that, uh, historic district or consistent with the architecture in the historic district. And then after that, you know, if the, the, we can either persuade the applicant or not. And if the applicant is not persuaded and wanna move ahead with whatever they, what they wanna put on the property after they demolished, if they decide to do that, that, um, they could do what they want. So it's just a process to try to, you know, kind of just sensitize people to the historic nature of the, of the historic district and try to persuade people to, uh, you know, build new structures that are consistent with that. As I said, you know, when we first looked at this, the timeline was expanding what I thought was too long. So we tightened it up and it's only like three months more than it would be. And, and the only reason there's some give and some of the, of the dates there is because, as you know, in the summertime and around the Christmas holidays, we only have one meeting a month. So you have to build that into there, but if you have, if it's during the regular part of the year, it would move much quicker than that you go through the process. And we've also designed it so the process can't be stalled at any one point. It can't die at the Historic Preservation Commission or the board can just kind of not do anything. Inaction would just lead to the process being resolved and, and the, the resident can do what they want. So I, I think this would fill the, 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 as I see it, the, the sense in the community, we wanna preserve the historic nature of the Robbins Park District. Um, but also that what I've heard from residents is, I, I wanna ultimately all do what I want with my home. So that's that. And consistent with that, one of the things is on a little bit of a slower track and this is something Michelle brought up. And this is something Michelle brought up. You know, when we talk about having new construction that's consistent with historic district, we're not talking about like you have to do certain things. It would be an array of things you can do, different styles that would be consistent. Um, and it, and so what we're envisioning is a picture book. And these are the different things you can look at. These are the things we'd encourage you to, styles we encourage you to, to look at. And not trying to have it look like cookie cutter, um, but, but just having it be consistent that with a wide variety of architectural styles that we think are consistent with historic architectural styles that are already in the historic district. So that's on a slower track because that requires much more work. So, long story short, anybody have any questions, comments, um, concerns? Matt, you always have a concern.
Uh, I do.
Yes.
Um, so, um, yeah, I've got a few things. So the, um, the report. I, I know we talked about how the historic, uh, Historical Society issues this report and how it doesn't cost a lot of money and it's very easy to prepare. But if you look at the description of the report and the ordinance, I mean, it sounds quite ominous.
Yeah.
And potentially costly.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if there's some parameters that we could put around that to,
Yeah.
you know, sort of make it clear that, you know, somebody doesn't have to write a novel about the house.
Right. Right. I agree with that. I looked at that and I wondered how that, do you, do you have some idea Alexis, how we could do that?
Well, I know that as Bethany and Rob would attest, that the Historical Society is already doing these reports for overlay district applicants. So I don't see it, um, in terms of information and volume being much different.
Right.
Um, I do, um, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Historical Society, but I think it would be a different report and look and feel, but very similar information as, you know, applicants for the overlay district do have to, um, you know, provide research on the home, architect's style, any historical relevancy to the property. So, um, I gather it would be very similar to the report that your team's receiving now, correct?
So, yeah, if I could jump in, I know that Bethany contacted two different communities that require this sort of survey. Um, what we've heard is anywhere between two and eight thousand. And what they'll do is they'll reach out to the, um, Historical Preservation Commission or the, um, Historical Society. And that's a piece of that report. I think the, the, the research that, that they might have over at Emmanuel Hall might be a piece of that survey. But the report is far more in-depth than that.
I mean, there's a big difference between, I think the number we heard with the last one was like fifty dollars or a hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
And eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. I'd rather have it closer to fifty.
Yeah.
I, I can't speak on that, but I do know that the Historical Society is providing a lot of this information already. Um, and I know that it would like an income generator of something like this. And I could say that it would be far less than that. But again, I would have to see what that report looked like to compare the two.
Is that for the impact report?
Yes, yes.
Eight thousand? Okay.
Yeah. But what if we, what if we change this? I mean, this, this is a, this is a work of process. This is something that I put together with Michael. So the whole, whole reason for having this meeting is to talk about things because this is kind of new. Um, but, but what if we put in there that, that, that is part, that the impact statement will provide such information as could be gathered from this, the Hinsdale Historical Society and nothing more? I mean, we, we don't want anybody to have to go out and do any original research.
Do research, right.
And so, so, I mean, if we, if it's not in the historical, in the Hinsdale Historical Society, arguably, it's not all that important, right? Because if we didn't recognize as a village, then, you know, maybe it's not that important. So what if we make it less onerous and just say that, that the report has to include what is available at the historic, uh, Hinsdale Historic Society? Or Hinsdale, what is it?
Hinsdale Historical Society.
Yeah, Hinsdale Historic Society.
The Ruth and Roger Anderson Archives is what we like.
Yeah. Just, and just say that. And then, and then, you know, I, I assume they charge the people for the cost, but that way you keep the cost down.
I want to be sure that we're consistent here. Are we talking about just having a report from, we could limit it to what's available in the archives?
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
And not have to go to one of these professional.
Yeah, no, I don't know. I don't, I don't know why I have to go to professional. Because we, we're trying to preserve history, not, not create it.
Yep.
Yeah. So, so it seems to me that they got, it should be one shop stop, one stop shopping. That they go to the historic, the Historical Society, gather what's there, put it inside. And this is only for historically significant homes. It's not for everybody. And, and if, and if there's something that, that is a history and somebody, you know, like Lincoln slept there or whatever, then that would be part in the report. And then we could, you know, bring that up in these meetings. So that's the point. And again, trying to strike a balance. I don't want residents to say that we've made the process so onerous that they can't do what they want with the property. So it's, it's persuasive, but we want to have all the information available. So I think that's what we, we should do.
I agree. Clarity and a clear context.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Tom, I have one question.
Sure.
Um, and I just don't know the answer to it. Does the, does the village have any relationship with the Hinsdale Historical Society from a financial perspective? Because, I mean, if we're going to lean on them, um, to help with this process, I mean, to me, it makes sense that we should also help them in some financial capacity that, in, in some way. I don't know the way to do that today, but I.
I don't think we do. But I, but don't they charge for this?
We, we would charge the applicant for this report.
So we cover their costs.
So there would.
And in the past, we have, um, traded services, right? Where we've, um, you know, rented out the lodge for free for our trivia night for, um, information, historical information for Andre and the hundred and fifty.
And also, I, I don't, if, if they're getting paid for the cost, I really don't view this as an imposition on them. I mean, this is something I'm sure they would like to do because they.
Yeah. I just, I just look at it from this, there's obviously time involved.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, there's, you know, and there's ebbs and flows with how, you know, budgets work within these, these volunteer organizations. So. I just, and I was just curious.
It is quite intensive for our society director and our, um, intern to research. You know, they're going through all doing archives and Tribune archives. Um, so I can't speak on, um, the price. But I do know that it would be very, you know, fractional compared to other municipalities and what they're currently offering. But it, it would be a nice income generator for the society as a nonprofit.
Yeah, yeah. Good point. Anything else?
Yeah, um, a couple of things I have, Tom. Uh, I like the idea of this mandatory preliminary meeting before you get too far into the design because that's different than the way we do it now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You come and said, here's, here's what the house is going to look like.
Right, right.
So I, I think that's, I think that's a good improvement. Um, one thing I had a little bit of a concern about, well, I have a concern about the length of this whole thing. I mean, we have this one sheet that said, you know, it could go five to nine months depending, you know, if people leave town, things like that. That's very, very long. And then, then the other thing that bothered me a little bit, now you touched on this, Tom, on page thirteen, we talk about, uh, the existence, uh, when they talk about impact in the immediate neighborhood, we talk about existence of a particular grouping of similar styles. And, y- you know, I don't think we necessarily want to have something that's going to look like the rest of the houses in that area.
Right.
I mean, if you, if you want to do that, go to southwest Hinsdale and you can see a bunch of houses that have either one peak or two peaks.
Right. So you think we should remove that section?
Well, I don't know if you're removing it, but I mean, I, I think we have to be, you, you might, I mean, there has to be a, a lot of different styles that are still, uh, you know, are still going to.
Yeah. So where was that?
Page, page thirteen, uh, paragraph six under the bottom.
I mean, does the Historical Society report really need to make a value judgment? I mean, isn't it really more like, this is a historic home and here's why. The design, who lived there, who designed it, you know?
This, oh, this is part of the impact study.
Yeah.
Right. And, and there's nothing mandatory in that. It's just something that's a, a little piece of the report. And there are places, so for instance, in, in River Forest, there's like a block with a lot of the Sears homes, for instance. And so that's the kind of thing that you note if somebody's, uh, talking about taking one of those away, right? That it, it may take away from the atmosphere of that particular block or neighborhood to have that, uh, leave.
And I think that's what we call altering the streetscape.
Yeah. So, but it's not.
So we could probably eliminate that.
So it's just a, a factor you look at, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I just, I, I saw that. It's go, okay, you know, we don't want to just limit ourselves. You know, it's okay to have some other different styles that are, that are in there without going. There are a couple of modern houses now in Hinsdale that are sure you would never want to have in the historic district.
Right.
And, oh, one, one other thing I noted.
So going back to your first point from the time. So when I got the first draft, I added up the time. It was, you know, like six months to nine months beyond what we have now.
Right.
Now I think it's three to four months at most, right? Do you think that's too long?
Well, that's an improvement over six to nine months.
Yeah. But as I said, the reason why.
I'm concerned if I'm a homeowner that I'm trying to sell a house and, you know, I, I, and I have a buyer now who wants to maybe tear it down but build a nice house, I want to make sure that he doesn't get tired and just bail.
Yeah.
And what if you, you know, what if you don't meet, you know, one of these thirty day timelines? I mean, what, what remedy does the homeowner have?
Well, I think, I think that it's, the, the inaction at any level just, just indicates it's approved.
Correct.
Right. So, so if we don't do it, then i- if it gets stuck, if it doesn't get, go through the process at the, at the speed we expect and it gets lost, it's approved.
Right. Goes to the next level.
Right. So there's no, it can't be punitive.
O- o- okay. It, because I don't.
This is our timeline. The only timeline that could be punitive is the ten days that the applicant would have to review any feedback and changes from the design review team and HPC. And if that didn't happen within ten days, then it would go directly to the board.
Right.
Is how I read it.
Right, right.
We, we also don't have one on the design review team's thirty day review. So, uh, in the event that they didn't complete their review within thirty days, um, we could add something.
Yes. Yeah. The whole, the whole point would be that this can't be sat on. I mean, if, if we're, if we're committed to historic preservation, we can't do it, you know, in a, in a relaxed way that, to the detriment of a homeowner. So any breach of the timeline is on us, not on the homeowner. That's got to be clear.
Okay. So every time we have a deadline, we're going to build that in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I, I think the timing here is, um, a bit hard to calculate because a lot of this is timing with, um, the design. And Rob, you're so familiar with this. Either the applicant receives feedback prior on from the design review team or they're working with their architect on something. I, I don't see this, the preliminary design timing really furthering anything on the applicant's side. Do you agree with me, Rob? Am I being clear here?
I do.
I'm not seeing that we're prolonging this with the design review team.
Yeah, I think it's the education piece that's going to be the challenge.
Either they're, they're designing with their architect or they're just rece- receiving some preliminary, um, uh, feedback from us.
Correct. And what's important to consider here is there, we're putting guardrails on the existing process. Right now, there are no parameters on our existing process. So this is actually an improvement over what we have right now.
And, and when you see some of these timelines, and President Colley touched on this, like the ninety days for the board review at the end, uh, we just worked backwards from a worst case scenario of, of meeting, summer months, et cetera. Uh, because we don't want to, we want to give the board the opportunity, but there's no reason it can't happen right away.
Yeah.
And I think the HPC doesn't want a backlog of, of caseload either.
Right.
Uh, then one other thing I noted is, I guess when you have this meeting, more of the formal meeting, once you've got the, the whole design and, and the HPC's of value and everything, that's going to be a public hearing now.
Right.
Which is, that's different than, than the past, no?
No.
No, it's going to be the same thing.
Oh, is that, okay.
We haven't, we haven't touched the process at the HPC. We've just touched the, the preliminary review and the review by the board.
Okay. So if I, if I live next door to this house and I'm, I'm concerned about it and I go to a public hearing and make my comments.
Yes, there'll be, um, a notice in Hinsdale, incorrect, thirty days prior.
Correct.
And it's a public meeting.
Yeah. Okay. I wasn't aware of that. So thank you.
All right.
Uh, one, one last thing I had. Um, so the, the compensation of the third member.
Yes.
Um, is that necessary?
No, it's not.
Do we really, do we really need the third member?
No, no. In fact, in fact, in fact, I, that was one of the changes I asked Michael to make. Because I could tell you who's going to be the member from the board. And she's sitting two people away from me right now.
There's only two females.
Yeah, right, right, right. So, so then, and then we'd have somebody from the Hist-, from the Historic Preservation Commission. And the third, it was, it was going to be compulsory and I made it optional. So in order to give flexibility, we, we built in that that person could be compensated. As long as I'm president, that's not going to happen, right? It'll either be two people or we find somebody who wants to do it without compensation. We can remove that section if you'd like, but I have no plan to compensate.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I, I guess I don't know. I mean, we have all these boards and commissions and nobody gets paid. Why are we going to start paying this one person?
This would be, this would be actual professional, you know, but I don't know that we need that. So why don't we just, we can just take that out. I mean, I, I had no, no intent of availing myself.
Could you say a third person may be appointed?
No, that's already in it. That's already, this is a separate provision.
Yeah, with no pay though.
Right, right. We can just take out the compensation provision.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. And you got something?
That was the only one. Clarity and a cap.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, that was easier than I thought. Any else? So second, second read on this one?
Yeah, let's do a second, make sure we got the length. And I think if there's anything, maybe go over it once more and if there's anything we can do on the timelines to shorten it.
Yeah.
Maybe take a look at that. Maybe thirty days goes to fifteen days. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I think if you could go to, you know, like, on that, that first, uh, those first three steps, if we could go, you know, from like ninety to sixty.
Yeah.
You know?
Just knowing that HPC only meets monthly, so that may.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about this first.
Oh, with the design review team?
Design review. Yeah, let's see if we can get it claps at the timeline a little bit more.
You know, get it from like ninety to sixty or something.
And, and again, I think the, the, the philosophy would be the extent that a, that a deadline is blown, it's approved.
Understood. We'll have another go at it.
Okay. Okay, great. That takes you, Luke?
Uh, which moves us to agenda item seven G. And this is a first read. Uh, and it's to amend Title Eight of the Village Code relating to the deputy fire chief and shift commander positions. Uh, effective April fifth, Chief Giannelli will retire as acting chief of the Village of Hinsdale Fire Department. Uh, that compelled the review of the staffing needs at the fire department. And, uh, we've concluded that the village's needs are best met by eliminating the position of deputy fire chief. Uh, as I stated previously, this is a first read and we'll, uh, open the discussions up to trustees, President Colley for any questions, and if there's any members of the community that want to comment.
Hi. My name is Brett Maury. I live at, uh, one eighteen South Stowe in Hinsdale. Um, and I want to thank everyone, thank you for giving me a couple of moments to speak here today. Um, been a proud member of the village for seventeen years. Uh, we moved in, um, in two thousand and seven. I initially didn't want to move here, but, so don't hold that against me. My wife brought me in and we've been, uh, we're proud to say that we're, uh, village, um, residents. So, um, we, we are pretty happy with how things are going with, um, public safety. And, um, with that, we all understand that there's a, a cost to doing business and we have to balance public safety with how much we're willing to spend to, to get to that point. Um, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention that I, I think it needs a, a little bit of, uh, harder look on whether or not we want to eliminate a position in the fire department. Um, the, you know, if, if somebody came to me and said, hey, we're adding staffing and we're going to eliminate a position, I probably wouldn't be up here standing and talking to you. But there's comfort in knowing that, um, Chief Giannelli and Deputy Chief Carlson live close by and they're able to come back here in times of storms and, and any other major incidents in town. Knowing that what other things may be happening, uh, in the village with the, with the staffing levels we have. So my concern is that we're losing a, a position that has the ability to come into town and take care of problems and, and help direct, uh, mutual aid if that's needed. And, um, I, I would just, um, I would urge you to, to look into that a little bit deeper before you make any final decisions, um, just for public safety. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Thoughts from the board? Comments? Okay, hearing none. Consent agenda for next time?
Yeah. Okay, that takes us to accounts payable.
I had the bag this week. I found everything in order. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to approve payments to the accounts payable for the period of February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four through March thirteenth, twenty twenty four in the aggregate amount of one million ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents as set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Payne?
Aye.
Can I have a motion with respect to consent agenda item eight B?
A move to approve consent agenda item eight B. Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler? Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bink?
Aye.
So second read, who's up on this?
Matt?
Me.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, uh, so we, uh, item nine A is a second read. Uh, this is the annual appropriations ordinance for twenty twenty four, which sets the legal spending limit for the village and is required by state law to be adopted by the end of this month. Uh, we had a public hearing as required by statute at our last meeting. Uh, the main change from last year is we're adding a twenty-five percent cushion for each line item, which going forward, hopefully will avoid the need to have to do the supplemental ordinance, uh, next year after, uh, the audit. Where you're moving surpluses from one line item to deficiencies in other line items. As discussed at the last meeting, there's also an adjustment for the police gun range to reflect that all that work is going to be done this year rather than having it been started, uh, last year. The, uh, department and, um, uh, contingencies within the general fund are five percent as in the past. The other funds have a ten percent contingency, uh, as in the past. But this has no effect on the village budget. It's just our, uh, legal spending limit for the year as required by state law. You had no questions last week? Any questions this week? Okay. Uh, in that case, I'll move to approve the annual appropriations ordinance for January one, twenty twenty four through December thirty-one, twenty twenty four.
Second. Will call vote?
Trustee Pashma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bink?
Aye.
Which moves us to agenda item nine B. And, uh, this is to approve a special use permit to operate a child daycare facility in the IB District Institutional Building located at nine forty-five South Garfield Avenue, commonly known as the Montessori Gifted Prep School, Preschool. If you recall, uh, just a quick summary, we did have a public hearing at a, at the plan commission in February of two thousand and twenty-four. There were no residents that spoke about, against this at the time. Uh, the summary from the plan commission meeting was basically, there was discussion about whether or not, um, there would cars that would queue on Garfield or back up in the staging. As a result, the applicant extended the hours for the drop-offs, uh, to be materially longer and also made an amendment to the ordinance which allows the village manager to make, uh, changes to the special use permit if there is staging. I would note that the staging has about, because of a shift from the entrance from the north side to the east side, has about availability for about twenty more cars. And there were never any, um, any issues there when a prior day school operated for fifty-plus years. Uh, we did have this as a first read back on March fifth, uh, and there was a little bit of discussion as far as the change in the drop-off and the, uh, and the staging, but the comments were limited to that. And with that, I would, when we told the applicant that they didn't have to come back for the second read. So with that, I would open up to any questions or comments. Okay, hearing none. Make a motion to approve an ordinance, approve a special use permit to operate a child daycare facility in the IB Institutional Building zoning district at nine forty-five South Garfield, commonly known as the Montessori Gifted Prep School.
Second. Will call vote?
Trustee Pashma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bink?
Aye.
And for the staff, going back to what I talked about with respect to major adjustments. With respect to these second reads of zoning matters, particularly when we've asked, they told the applicant they don't have to come back. Rather than having the trustees kind of try to remember what happened last time and read through, you know, five or six pages of the text again, if we could have a short summary upfront that kind of explains what happened at the first meeting. I know at the very end, we talk about the questions that were asked, but if we could have something upfront that was more the bottom line, that the trustees ask questions, the questions appeared to be answered to the trustee's satisfaction and trustee Stifler advised the applicant that they don't have to come back for the second meeting. Then, then, you know, we, it just kind of orients everybody and they can read more if they want, but then they can remember, oh yeah, I remember that, I didn't have any questions. So I just think it would make it easier for everybody if we had that kind of executive summary upfront of what happened at the last meeting. The bottom line of what happened at the last meeting, not the, all the questions that were asked. Yeah, we, we didn't all pay for it either. Yeah, that's right. Okay, um, so we voted on that, right? Okay. Discussion items. Anything else on discussion items?
No discussion items.
Did you have something to talk about?
Nope.
Nope?
Not yet.
Okay. Staff reports?
No report.
Okay. Citizens petition? Any citizen wishing to speak on any matter on or off the agenda?
We do have a gentleman that would like to introduce himself.
Okay.
I'm Baron Leacock. I'm, uh, running for county board for District Three. Um, I think I just won my primary, par- primary because I, uh, didn't have an opponent. So I thought I'd show up and, uh, say hi, but the, the real reason I came was because I heard about the Montessori school. My son actually went there in, uh, in Chicago. It was a phenomenal school. And it broke my heart that we had to take them out of there, um, to, uh, when we moved out here. We found a great school out here though, Seaton Montessori, um, uh, in Clarendon Hills. Uh, but that is a great school, so, um, really happy to, to, that it's coming here. I was hoping to run into him, but it sounds like you guys told him, he didn't have to come. But that's, that's all I really had to say. And, uh, you know, I look forward to the next several months and, uh, look forward to reaching out to anybody. Anybody wants to get in touch with me, I'd appreciate talking to anyone that I can.
Okay, good luck.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, trustee comments?
Nope.
No reason for a closed session? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bink?
Aye.
Thank you.